Calling the meeting to order, 7:00 PM. Can we all stand to do the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I would like to read this to you with a flag, United States, America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I ask for approval for the minutes of the regular meeting of September 1st, 2022, Attachment A?
I make a motion to accept this meeting minutes from September 1st.
Can I get a second?
A second motion.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to go out of order and for on the agenda and move on to new business.
A second motion.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to new business. Dr. Albeda's previous contract was up for renewal before December 2022. Consideration and action to accept $25,000 for the special support earmark grant from the Massa-
Vice Chair, it's just the one above.
It's right here. Oh, that's where, I'm sorry. The new bargaining benefit policy is reviewed and updated periodically. No, that's, that's the wrong one, too. I'm sorry, forget everything I've said. Consideration and action to accept the adoption of the enclosed contract which has been negotiated between Dr. Albeda and Chelsea School Committee for the term of January 1st, 2023 through June 20th, 2028. Can I get a roll call?
Ms. Carraro?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Covas-Caraballo?
Yes.
Mr. O'Regan?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Abbott?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Mr. Ambrosino?
Yes.
That's eight in the affirmative and two absent.
Eight in affirmative, one absent, motion passes.
Two absent.
I'm sorry, two absent. And we can take, can I get a motion to take back into order?
Sure, I make a motion to go back into a regular order on the agenda.
Thank you, I would like to call our HR Director, Ms. Christine Lee, up. And she will do our presentations of our professional teacher status certificates.
Good evening, everyone, good to see all of you here today. We are going to be honoring our professional status teachers this evening, so these are teachers who have worked in Chelsea Public Schools for three years under a license, full-time, and in their first, in their first year, their fourth year, they become basically a tenured teacher, so we're very excited to announce the people today. And I have practiced the names, so hopefully I see them correctly, but if I don't, I apologize. So here are our professional status teachers. So Lindsay Phelps is a special education teacher at Chelsea High School. If you're here and I announce you, please just stand and we can recognize you, but otherwise we'll kind of just go through and applaud at the end. Brad Agostinelli, science teacher at the Clark Avenue Middle School. Virginia Keim, she's a psychologist at the Clark Avenue Middle School. Janie O'Halloran, she is a school psychologist at the Clark Avenue Middle School. Vasileke Dendrum Myras is a first grade teacher at the Sokolowski. Yiptisam Chawon is a math coach at the Brookwoods Elementary School. Kaylee Bojamp, she is a social communications teacher at the ELC. Lisa Mastrokola, she is a special education teacher at the Wright. We have Margaret Ruthie Merrill, who is an occupational therapist at the Early Learning Gina Rustiano is a physical education teacher and lead mentor at the high school. Liam Hanready is occupational therapist at the Burke Complex. Erica Jimenez is a kindergarten teacher at the Caminos, in the Caminos Program at the Early Learning Center. Alvin Rivera Garcia is a history teacher at the Chelsea Opportunity Academy. Mayling Rosario is a social worker at the Clark Avenue Middle School. Nazia Bachmann Strifeield is a ESL teacher at the Clark Avenue. Sarah McAllister is a special ed teacher at the Clark Avenue Middle School. Madison Pacoli, she is a kindergarten teacher at the Early Learning Center. It's okay, I love the upgrades. Oh, sorry. Yay! You get all of the applause since you were here in person, so thank you. Allison Saif, music teacher at the Hooks. Lauren Cocoluto, who is a special education teacher at the Hooks. Leah Smith, special education teacher at the Hooks. Makala O'Neal, she's a elementary teacher at the Hooks. Amanda Jabir, she's a librarian at the Wright. Charles Coughlin, he is a technology teacher at the Wright. Christina Noonan, she is an English teacher at the Wright. Christine Rosa, she's a math teacher at the Wright. Emily Hall, an English teacher at the Wright. And lastly, Jessica Asadurian, who's a special education teacher at the Wright. So let's give a round of applause for all of our-
And Christine, I'm going to call you back up to present the non-bargaining agreement, the contract.
I will be giving a certificate to everyone, so I'll put it into her office, but I will give the one in person today. So we have updated our non-bargaining agreement, so anyone who's not in a union is covered under the non-bargaining agreement, and so we wanted to make sure that we update their agreement since the last time we did was in 2019. And so a few things that, goals that we had for the updated language includes we always want to do what's in the best interest of our students, we want to always deepen and extend our culture of care, and we also want to make sure that our non-bargaining employees have the same benefits regarding maternity, paternity, religious day, and other benefits. So the main highlights for the non-bargaining agreement are as follows. We have updated our vacation designation, so we basically increased the number of vacation days in terms of how many years of service you have. We have increased sick buyback rates by $50. We have also allowed for more flexible language with snow days, and we implemented our leave of absence that mirrors the language that's in our other contracts such as our teachers' union and our AFSMI units. We also have updated our briefing leave language and also added two religious holidays for our non-bargaining staff, so this, these are the main highlights. Any questions? Great.
Okay, we're going to move on now to public comment. Anyone that would like to get up and speak? Are they signing in or we haven't heard their names? Are they signing in or?
Folks can sign in here too, to leave your name and address, just so I don't miss it. And does anyone need interpreting for tonight?
Does anyone need an interpreter? Everybody will have four minutes to make their comments.
Okay, good afternoon, school committee members. My name is Emily Mandevare, I'm a senior at Chelsea High School, and I'm talking about the E policy. The E policy takes a toll on most students. The awareness people in this, the awareness people in this committee should have on what responsibility students in Chelsea live with is crucial. Many students are the adults in their household, from constantly taking care of loved ones to providing income to their household. As much as we want students to come to school every day on time, let's focus on why they aren't there. From personal experience, in my first quarter of my junior year, I received an E. I was a student working two jobs trying to make ends meet because my priority at the time was making money enough to have a roof under my head. Due to sleeping at 3:00 AM in the morning, I missed my first period a lot. On top of this, I was facing a toxic living environment and was still expected to come to school every day. I had to advocate myself to a stranger I did not know, so I was able to get that E excuse and tell him why my priority at that time was making money instead of attending school. Recently, this year, I also was about to get an E until I talked to my principal because I had health issues that didn't allow me to go to school as regularly as I wanted to. Now we need to keep in mind, what are we going to do with students who do not want to tell this to somebody they do not know? How can we have faculty that they trust be able to change that E they have instead of talking to a stranger? Realistically, students face being the parents to their own siblings because there is an adult home. Implementing a policy such as E policy needs to be adaptable to the point students don't receive additional stress as long as just simply communicating with them. I hope that this policy can become something that students can be able to advocate with different faculty, or that you guys can provide this policy so that more faculty that they feel comfortable with can be reachable to them. And to also look into having mental health days because that's a big priority to a lot of students in going through high school. Overall, they need a day to just take a breather, and mental health is really important. So just overall looking into better forms of communication with administration and students, and I just hope to work together as a community to work out this policy, to make sure that it's equitable for all parties. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kalina Riz, and I'm a junior at Chelsea High School. I think it's unfair how most students don't know that they have an E policy in a class, and it affects their future. Last year I got an E and I wasn't able to play sports. Some of us depend on sports to go to college because, as you know, we live in Chelsea and opportunities are very limited. The E policy just makes it harder for us to achieve our goals. I know that attendance is a big deal, but three days is not enough for us. And as one of my teammates said, mental health days are important because high school is hard, and I'm sure all of you have been in high school, and I know it was a tough journey, and I'm sure you took breaks, and I think we all need breaks. And yeah, thank you.
Hi, my name is Daniela, I am a junior in Chelsea High School, and you know, I'm here to advocate for myself and for other students who may not be here and able to talk today. I'm here because I am like very close to getting an E in one of my classes, and I feel like, you know, like I never really have the chance, you know, to actually, you know, get to class on time because I still am recovering from an inter ankle, and you know, for other students, you know, like as my classmates have said, they're dealing with mental issues, I'm also being part of dealing with mental issues as well. And you know, it could affect, you know, with students' grades, you know, and able to get into college. And one of the things that, you know, kind of like angers me a bit is that, you know, in the PDF file for the attendance policy, it states that if a student has three or more unexplained absences in the fourth quarter, he, she, or they would not be able to receive any passing grade. So if, you know, a senior already got like an E in your last quarter, then we'll be able to recover from that. And you know, I feel like it could damage, you know, a way, you know, for them to be able to get to college, because college, there are some colleges who check your grades and attendances and see how you are and see how you cooperate. It could also, you know, as one of my classmates said, affects, you know, not being able to play in any extracurricular activities at school, like, you know, sports, clubs, dancing, et cetera, and you know, I just feel like it's unfair because they can be suffering for so many things, and not everyone is realizing that. And, you know, not having the opportunity to actually, you know, get better, because once they see that, they feel like they're failing in everything. And, you know, it's just, it just puts a lot of pressure on high school students nowadays, and, you know, not seeing how they can get such a good grades just for them to miss like a couple of classes and them getting a lower just in an instant. So yeah, oh, thank you.
Hello, everyone, I hope you're having a good day. I just wanted to make the fact that I go to Northeast, I don't go to Chelsea I, but we do not have this rule, and I don't know why Chelsea does. Like, I feel like it's super unfair and it's hurting a lot of people's GPA if you miss three days and then your grade goes down to a 60. I feel like it's very unfair, me dealing with my mental health. I know it's very hard for me to go to school and wake up and go to school, so I can't imagine how they feel because they constantly have academics. Well, I don't, and I'm struggling. So I just wanted to point out the fact that in Northeast, we don't have that, and people still go to their school. And my question is, is it because we're from Chelsea? And I don't know. Is it because we're people of color, and do you guys expect less from us? You know, I just wanted to point that fact out. Thank you very much for your day.
Excuse me, can you state your name?
My name is Alan.
I will be speaking on behalf of Jason Rodriguez because he could not be able to make it today. Hello, my name is Jason Rodriguez, a junior at Chelsea High School. A couple of weeks ago, I was looking at my grades from last year, where I saw that I had an E for a class. When the system said it was a 95, when I looked at my transcript, it was an E. I missed three days of school because I was sick and my mom wrote a note to the school. I received no Es in my other classes besides gym. I was given no notice of the E and just found out about it at the beginning of this year. I went to Mr. Corangelo, the attendance officer. When I talked to him, he said there was nothing that he could do, and it was my responsibility to know of it. How could I do so when I never received my report card and the grade system was closed over the summer? I did my best to make an attempt to appeal this E, but the school put no effort. They took a long time to respond, and this is why I'm here today, because my time and energy was wasted. How does this motivate me to continue working in my classes when the school is freely able to take my, take away my grade? This is ridiculous, it's counterintuitive, and has taken us multiple steps back. Thank you for listening.
I am a freshman from Chelsea High School. When I first got my, the E policy, I was, I was wandering around the halls to see who to, to give this to. I figured out who to give it to, but they never showed up for three days. I had a week to, to give this paper to the person I'm supposed to give to the E policy, but it's only for one person. It's just that, it's just very hard for me to know what exactly the school is beneficial for me if I don't exactly know what, what I'm supposed to do for this E policy.
Hey, everyone, my name is Lauren Sokol. As you can see, I'm not a student here in Chelsea, but I am a social worker with La Collaborativa. I am in charge of the Riot Squad, and I do clinical therapy with the youth in our program. Wasn't going to say anything tonight, but I was so inspired by my youth here, I wanted to just give you one or two more comments from my perspective as someone who's been working with these youth for several months. What I can tell you is that one of the most useful tools I've used in therapy is students' participation in extracurricular activities. It's a huge protective factor for a lot of our students, particularly sports, and it really concerns me that students who are already struggling to attend school are now losing that other protective factor because of the E policy. That makes my job a little bit harder, and it makes it more difficult to advocate for these students' success. So I just would like you all to think about that a little bit as well. Thank you.
Vice Chair, I do have one to read. So I have a public comment from school committee member Roberto Jimenez Rivera. Dear school committee colleagues, I am sorry I was not able to attend today's meeting due to a prior work commitment, but thank you for taking up the proposed resolution to support the Massachusetts Indigenous Legislative Agenda. This resolution came about from conversations I had with Marisol Santiago, former school committee member, following up on conversations she had with indigenous leaders from Massachusetts. I had previously learned about the Indigenous Legislative Agenda, but it was at Ms. Santiago's urging that I decided to file this resolution. It is crucial that we celebrate indigenous peoples by not only commemorating the holiday, but by listening to indigenous voices and supporting their fights, so I wanted to thank Ms. Santiago for this. The resolution outlines a bit of the indigenous history of Massachusetts and Chelsea specifically. It then affirms our support for each other, each of the bills, in the Indigenous Legislative Agenda. This includes bills that would support including indigenous voices in our school curriculum, a commission to support educational outcomes for Native American youth, insisting Indigenous Peoples' Day at the state level, prohibiting Native American mascots, and updating the Massachusetts State Seal and flag to remove offensive references to Native peoples. I hope that our support for this legislative agenda will lead others in Chelsea and across the Commonwealth to start thinking about the debt we owe to the First Nations who inhabited the land that today we call home. I also hope it will be part of our continuing conversation about how we celebrate and teach about indigenous identities and histories to our young people. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the report of the Superintendent of Schools.
Great, so thank you, everyone, for all your comments. I am going to now provide an update on the attendance policy. We are specifically calling it attendance policy because we are trying to veer away from E policy. So with that said, I'll go ahead and get started. So far, oops, I'll wait. So, so far, you, we have listened and had five listening and discussion, discussion sessions. We had one on September 8th at Chelsea High School, it was with students. Then we had another listening and discussion session on September 13th with our Chelsea High School families. Then we had another listening and discussion session on September 14th with our Chelsea High School staff session, staff. And then September 21st, we had another student listening and discussion session. And then we just recently had one on Monday, November 7th, at Chelsea High School with students. So we've been listening and taking a lot of input. And then we also sent a survey to our Chelsea High School community, and that was filled out by students, staff, and families on Monday, September 26th. And we've also had one subcommittee discussion. So there's been a lot of going back and forth and listening, and we, we said we would listen, and, and we've, we've been taking everything in, and so we're, we've been, we're ready to make some recommendations, and that will happen at our next subcommittee. But I just wanted to go over, this is kind of like what we've heard so far in a, in a very broad nutshell, very broad nutshell. So what we've heard is that the policy is unfair to students who have earned high grades, i.e., for example, someone with a 92% loses 32 points as compared to someone with a 64, they only lose four points. The policy seems punitive. The policy limits parents' ability to excuse absences, and students have no opportunity to fix the grade after the year ends. And then on the other hand, we've heard that the policy is fair and flexible. The policy holds students accountable for coming to school. Policy helps students prepare for college and career. The policy improves student attendance, and student attendance at school is state law. So that's what we've heard. And so we've, we create, yesterday when we met with students at Chelsea High School, we created some options, and here's kind of what we were thinking, and we really, we discussed with students at Chelsea High School yesterday. I know a couple of you, the students that are here, were with us, and we just really went over some of the things we were thinking of tweaking, and we got feedback again, and so we'll come, we'll go, we're revising again, we're looking at it again. And so our next steps are, again, based on feedback from all of our stakeholders, district administration, we'll draft a revised policy. So we're going to put, draft a revised policy, and then we're going to present that revised policy to school committee at a policy subcommittee, the next one coming up. And I think our students will be happy because one of the things that we talked about was instead of dropping the grades like from a 92% to 60, dropping the grades by 10 points across the board instead, and that was creating some technological issues for us with the programs that we do use. And, and meeting with the people who create our program called Aspen and our IT tech, they're, they're looking into that. But the goal was to have this policy in place by the end of first quarter, but we didn't quite get there. And so a question that students have asked is if the, when the new policy is tweaked and when it's passed, will it be retroactive? The answer is yes, it will be retroactive, but then that creates a problem with the IT, and there's a lot of logistics behind that. So what we are recommending, and what we are going to do, is that, and this, this time, this for this semester only, as we work and construct this policy, is that due to the policy revision, we're going to waive the current E policy for the first and second quarters. The new attendance policy will go into effect the third quarter in January. And so that's what we're, we are proposing, so we'll get information out, but the policy still- But the policy still has, the new policy still has to be voted on. But we are really concerned about the technological piece because if we were to continue with the policy that we have in place, and then we have to do it retroactive, it'll be very difficult to work out the logistics of that. So, in light of that, we will waive the first quarter and the second quarter until we can implement the new policy afresh in January. And so, that is all I have, and I know there'll probably be here, and I'm going to call Mr. Delaney up to the front to answer any questions from school committee at this time.
Thank you. First of all, just wanted to say thank you to all of the brave students that came here. I love seeing you all. I'm myself an activist in the city of Chelsea, and this gives me pride that we see that we have a future. We still have a lot to work on this policy. Thank you, Dr. Albeida, for putting everything together. So my question will be, I heard Daniela saying that she's going to be close to getting an E because of her injury. Do we have, on the new policy that is going to be proposed, do we have anything that we can assimilate to the PMLA that is in the state that would allow students to have medical leave? Like to have an extension of their time and perhaps a tutor or E-classes? Something that will keep them up to level in the grade? Because I understand that losing hours and losing curriculum will affect them when they do the MCAS. Do we have anything that we can work on that?
So, number one, in the current policy, as things currently stand, we have unlimited medical excused. So, even if you miss 10 days, 15 days due to something medical, if there's documentation, those are all going to be excused. So you wouldn't, even in the current policy, which we're waiving, the grade wouldn't be affected by that. But in terms of the support that's in place, if we do have students that are out for extended period of time, we do have tutoring that is available to those students.
My question is, at our subcommittee, so there be a draft of the new policy that we're going to review?
So, two versions. One version would be the current policy with comments off to the side, so then you can see clearly what the changes will be. And then, the other version would be the proposed new policy. And we can have an iterative process around that. So, as we look at that, we would be looking to make a motion to move it to the full committee. So we would be looking at the actual final document. So yeah, you'll see both.
We're looking for December for vote?
Yeah, at the next subcommittee policy, this will be a discussion, so that way we can send it over to school committee for votes.
Just curious, how many parents actually have input on this?
Off the top of my head, I would have to pull up, but in the survey...
There was 99.
99, thank you so much.
And in the parents, I know that in the parent forum, there was about 99. If I remember, sorry, I know that I didn't... I know that in the survey for the teachers, there was about 33 teachers that responded. In the survey for the parents, there was about 99 for the parents, and the students were a little bit more responsive, more or less, hypothetically speaking. Because I remember you did the numbers roughly about, depending on how many students there was.
I don't have a question. I just have more of a statement. And it's a teachable moment going forward. Hopefully, we can square this away. I apologize, you guys were very moving altogether throughout this whole process, truly. As a student athlete, and someone that has been, you know, in one way or another, affected by the changing times in Chelsea, absolutely, I feel your pain. And I wish that we had the advocacy. I wish that we had the ability to come and have these listening sessions, and have this kind of, just overall ability to just sit here and have a dialogue. I wish that we could have had a more ample solution, and that the students that had to potentially sit out their season because the E-Policy wasn't clear, because the sport was already in the season. I apologize for, you know, I feel terrible for those students because, of course, they've already been impacted, and they're seniors that are now going to be able to get that do-over. So, you know, I feel for them. Thank you. Hopefully, this will sort out a lot going forward. So, thank you.
Well, we look forward to another rich discussion at our policy subcommittee, and then hopefully, we can present the new policy for a school committee vote soon. Thank you, Mr. Delaney, and I want to thank everybody who has participated in the process, our students. We've gotten to know some of our students by name, strength, and story. Some of them are in this room, and it's been a wonderful journey to get to know you. And thank our families who participated in the survey, and our staff. Our staff spent a lot of hours doing the listening and discussion sessions. We had five different ones. And I just want to thank Mr. Delaney, Dr. Jennings, and Mr. Sullivan for being at those listening sessions, and Mr. Morales, our principal at the high school. It's been a real community effort, and I believe that the policy will be improved, and hopefully, we can start afresh in January. Thank you. And, Mr. Delaney, you're up too for the indicators of success. And we're going to also go over the MCAS, a brief overview of MCAS as well. So, Mr. Delaney. Mr. Delaney wears many hats.
Thank you, Dr. Albeida. And thank you to the students. We mentioned it at some of the meetings, but I hope you guys are proud of yourself because you initiated and made change in a system. And regardless of what the issue is, there are lessons to be learned from this. You get together, you collaborate, you work hard, you do the research, you do the work, and you make change. So I'm looking forward to watching the change that you make in the world as you move beyond the places that you're in right now. Because this is small compared to the things that you're going to do. So on to the indicators of success. We actually have some things to be really excited about. So Veronica, if you can slide down. So let's start. I'm going to go into a little bit more detail after this in terms of MCAS, but maybe I'll pause for a minute as our students get home so they can get their homework done.
Bye.
All right, so, in terms of growth on MCAS, as we can see, we have some highlights to celebrate here, particularly in math. We definitely made more jumps in math than we did in ELA. But if you take a look at the Hook School at the top, in 2021, we had 25 percentile in growth, and in 2022, it went up to 43, almost doubled. The Kelly School math went from 15 to 16. The Berkowitz School math went from, oh, we just blacked out. The Berkowitz School math went from 11 to 30, nearly tripled. Sokolowski math went from 8 to 14. Brown ELA went from 18 to 23. Math went from 9 to 13, and science went from 7 to 21. So, science tripled. At the right, the math went from 14 to 15. At Chelsea High School, another school, all three areas, actually, two areas out of the three jumped. ELA went from 27 to 30. Math went from 15 to 29, almost doubled. And then, we had, you know, we had a drop in science. So math, we're doing much better in terms of growth. ELA, we're seeing some drops. All right, thank you. So for attendance, the way I looked at this data is I'm looking at the year-to-date percentage at this point. And in almost every single grade level, we see a jump in our year-to-date percentage as compared to last year's percentage. I'm not going to go through every single number, but if I stand over here and point, and we have increases in every single grade level. So right now, we are on pace to improve our attendance rate in every single grade level. And some substantial jumps that I want to point out, in grade... In grade 12, the percentage was 48%. And year-to-date thus far is 75. So we have a huge, huge jump in grade 12. Grade 12 has always been a challenge. So that is the biggest jump of all the grade levels. But in every single grade level, it has gone up. Another thing we're focused on is, we really want to push students at the middle school to get to higher-level mathematics. So this is the first year that we have been able to offer an algebra course, high school algebra. And actually, you'll be voting on credits for that later on in the evening. But we're offering algebra for credit in the middle school. And not only does that expose kids to higher-level math, but it also provides them an opportunity to get to calculus faster, which means they actually have more opportunity for enrichment as well. So currently, we have 24 students taking algebra this year. For AP courses, last year, at the beginning of the year, we had 255 students in AP courses. This year, we have 282. We've improved in that area. Last year, students taking calculus, it's exactly the same, 138 last year to this year. Students enrolled in early college. Last year, at the beginning, we went from 214 students. This year, we have 325 students in early college. And lastly, the dual enrollment went from 52 to 49. So it's roughly the same area. So for I-Ready, I-Ready is our formative assessment. We track reading and we track math. So this is last year. So if you can scroll down, it's the beginning of the year, so it's sort of tough. So this is more of a baseline thing, but just to let you know where we're at, those numbers are percent of students on grade level. So the expectation is, if you are in third grade right now in November, you're not expected to be at grade level because we want to be there by the end of the year. So the numbers are low, but as we go, we're going to, we'll see increases there. But in comparison to where we were last year, it's hit or miss. Again, more jumps in math than there are in ELA, but in some areas, we're up by a little. Other areas, we're down by a little. Okay, so mobility. Overall, the month of October, we had a lot more coming in than we had coming out total. We had 120 new students enrolled, and we only lost 37. And that is it for indicators of success. So, we'll shift to an overall overview of MCAS, but I'll take any questions on the indicators of success if you have any.
I do have two initial questions. On indicator one, does NA mean that they didn't take the MCAS? Or that there's just not any data for it? On indicator one?
Can you repeat the question?
Yes, so in indicator one, there are some...
Oh, NA, you said. Is that what you said, NA?
Yes.
Yeah, that's science? So we don't do science at the elementary? We do it in grades...
Five and eight.
We do it in middle school, and it's not until fifth. So you do science in fifth, and eighth, and in tenth. So the elementaries just don't take that assessment.
Thank you. And then, my second question is on indicator four. What do we use I-Ready for? Is there an intervention period for students who may not be meeting that expectation? Or like their progress?
So it's a progress monitoring platform. When you do your initial assessment, not everyone takes the same assessment. It's actually interactive. So you take a question, you get it correct, they give you a harder question. You get that one correct, they give you a harder question. And then, they get a sample of what they would consider grade-level questions. And if you get enough, a higher enough percentage of those grade-level questions, you'd be considered meeting the benchmark for being at grade level. So we have five different levels. We have above-grade level, at-grade level, approaching-grade level, and then, one grade level below, and then two or more below. So what happens is, the platform allows us to point out the students that are not at grade level, are at grade level. But it goes much deeper than that as we get the data. So it'll tell us what areas they're struggling with, and it actually suggests certain activities for those particular students.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions on indicators? All right, so we can shift to the... It's a high-level overview for our MCAS. I mean, as you can see, we did better in math than we did in ELA. So, just so you get a sense statewide, our patterns are actually pretty similar statewide. Mixed results. Math scores increased across the state as well, and ELA scores declined across the state. And science went up a little tiny bit. Compared to these results, when you compare them to pre-pandemic levels, the state has a lot of work to do, and so do we, across all subject areas. In ELA, we have found that there are two focus areas to improve, and that is writing scores in the early grades and early literacy in general. Student absenteeism does remain a challenge across the board, across the state. So we're not the only one struggling with that, but we're actually seeing early indicators that our attendance is getting better, so. Key highlights for us. For the last two and a half years, we know things have not been normal. So the results do reflect this. Student access to instruction was disrupted due to absenteeism during COVID. But our student growth percentile, which doesn't measure achievement and being on grade level, but it does measure if students are learning at a certain rate. And so it compares the growth of students to similar students like them statistically, and it gives them percentile rankings to say, a student who scored like me last year, I did better than 42%. I did better than those, I did better than forty-two percent of those students, or I did better than ninety-two percent of those students. So that's how we measure growth, and we are trending in the right direction there. In terms of access, access is the assessment that we use for our multilingual learners, students who are not primary English speakers, and we have, anyone who's identified as a, what we call an English-language learner, has to take the access test, and we monitor their growth. Chelsea Public Schools had the highest growth of any urban district in the state. The highest growth of any urban district in the state. So we're extremely proud of that bullet right there. But we do know we have worked ahead of us. We have many students who are working below grade level. We have students who are struggling for a variety of reasons, and we're continuing to push and offer the best education we can. I think that is the last slide then. Is it not the last slide? Oh, there we go, it's just slow. Okay, so we have a comparison to similar districts. So you can see for grade ten, MCAS student growth, Chelsea is red, and you can see that we have, Milford and Marlborough are jumping ahead of everybody else, and we're sort of right in the middle of the pack for ELA on the left. And in math, it looks like we're third among those districts. And you also have Milford and Marlborough, I'm sorry, Milford and Malden right ahead of us. So we're right in the middle of the pack there. Give me another click. Do we skip one?
Yeah, go back, there you go.
Okay, yeah, thank you. So the, the line on the top, this is proficiency. This has nothing to do with growth. This has to do with what are the raw scores that we're getting. And you can see a pattern from the state going back to 2017, slowly climbed. It looked like the state was making progress from 2017 up until that COVID year. The state was making progress, but if you see the steepness of that slope, and then you compare it to the red line below, we are below the state average, which is something we want to fix. But if you can see the steepness from 2017 to 2019, the Chelsea line is more steep, which means we were growing at a, at a faster pace than the state. And then along comes COVID, and the state went down, and so did we. And we're following the patterns of the state. And we are now below where we were back in, you know, 2017. So we have to go back to the drawing board, go back to basics, build foundational knowledge, and, and move on from there. And that was the last one. All right, any questions? All right, thank you.
Do we have an update from the student representative?
First, hey, thank you very much for having me here today. This is my first council meeting. My name is Hannah Zies, if nobody knows me yet. I am a senior at Chelsea High School. Like I said, my name is Hannah Zies Romero. Unfortunately, all the students that were here left. But I did kind of want to piggyback up on what they said about the E-policy. Fully support whatever they said. And another thing is, since they already said everything that I needed to say about the E-policy, I wanted to talk about feminine products in the bathrooms at Chelsea High School. I have had a lot of feedback from the females at our school, and I feel like it's very unfair that we're not allowed to have that sort of access in our bathrooms, and we have to walk all the way downstairs to receive these feminine products. And sometimes, I know, especially girls with anxiety, me being one of them, I sometimes get very scared to go and ask for these things at the nurse's office, or even if an accident just happens, you know. Sometimes it's just hard to walk down all those flights of stairs. We know Chelsea High is a very big school, so that's one. Another thing I wanted to talk about was in school daycare. I have, me personally, a friend who is a single teen mom. She, at the moment, has missed almost three months of school because of her child. It's very sad to, to hear her story sometimes. She tells me it all the time. I always check up on her and always wonder sometimes why she's not in school or why she's not even answering the phone. We do have our amazing, I think she's a social worker, Ms. Barbosa. She works with teen parents. So she does an amazing job, but sometimes it's even hard for her to get in contact with my friend because of how much time she has to dedicate for her child. And she does, doesn't have a, access to a daycare at the moment. So that's another thing I wanted to talk about. Also, like they were talking about with the E-policy, I also kind of wanted to bring up mental health, uh, mental health in Chelsea High School. It's a very sore subject right now. When I get to sit down and actually talk to some of my classmates, it, it hurts. It really does that they have, they're scared to open up to a lot of our faculty members with their mental illnesses and their mental health, and just things that sometimes are going on at home. And it's tough to be in school when those things are happening. It's, I know that the school and our education is number-one priority. It's number-one priority for me. That is why I'm here today. That is why I'm here defending everyone that I go to school with and everyone else in the Chelsea District. I think that mental health really does play a role in how you get your education. Being in class sometimes just doesn't sit right with me because of my mental illnesses sometimes. And I think that we need to have more breaks throughout the day or maybe more breaks throughout the week just to have a place to sit and actually not think about things than a letter grade or a numbers that we have to learn in math or an essay that I have due on Friday. I think those are some things that I would like to have implemented, like Mental Health Day at Chelsea High School. And I think that's all the updates that I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go on to our personnel updates. So this quarter, this month, we have hired twenty-six percent Caucasian staff, sixty-four percent Hispanic, five percent Black, and five percent Asian Pacific Islander. So you can see all the new hires in your packets, and then there's the resignation, retirement terminations. And then if you turn the enclosure over, you'll see our enrollment is back up at six-thousand-two-hundred-and-twelve students. So we're definitely above pre-pandemic levels by twelve students. And I know that more students were receiving students little by little daily. So we're, we're just back at our enrollment levels, are back at pre-pandemic levels. So it seems like we have more kids, but we are actually back to where we used to be. And I would like to commend these reports for the record. And then we have committee reports and subcommittee minutes. There are, there are a couple in here.
Well, I make a motion, we accept all subcommittee minutes. Okay, we have no unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business. Consideration in action to accept the updated non-bargaining benefit policy effective July 1st, 2022. Explanation, the non-benefit, the non-bargaining benefit policy is reviewed and updated periodically. Can I get a roll call?
Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Covas-Caraballo?
Yes.
Mr. O'Regan?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Abbott?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent.
Seven in the affirmative and two absent, motion passes. Consideration in action to accept $25,000 for the special support earmarked grant from the Massachusetts State Legislators, Legislature. Excuse me, for fiscal year 2023. Explanation funds will be used for intermediate-level tuba, a new recording console, cameras, and other expenses for the Chelsea High School music program. Roll call?
Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Covas-Caraballo?
Yes.
Ms. O'Regan?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Abbott?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent.
Seven in the affirmative and two absent, motion passes. Consideration in action to accept $707,832 from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the Adult Education Services Grant. Explanation, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has increased Chelsea allocations for the adult education. The additional funds will be used for salaries, supplies, materials, and other expenses in support of the program. Roll call?
Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Covas-Caraballo?
Yes.
Mr. O'Regan?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Abbott?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent.
Seven in the affirmative and two abs, and two absent, motion passes. Can somebody else read these?
Would you like me to read them?
Yes.
Consideration in action to accept an increase of $25,640 from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the Homeless Children and Youth Grant. Explanation, the homeless children grant funds received last year have been allocated to mental health services, backpacks, and school supplies, and debit cards for school uniforms slash clothing and emergency needs. The additional funding will be used for purposes consistent of the original award. Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Covas-Caraballo?
Yes.
Mr. O'Regan?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Abbott?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent. Motion carries. Okay, I'll go back to them. Consideration in action to accept up to $103,000 from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the Mascred Promising Practice Grant. Explanation, Mascred Grant Funds will be used for dropout prevention specialists at the Chelsea Opportunity Academy for several positions and other expenses for the Chelsea Reach Program. Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Covas-Caraballo?
Yes.
Mr. O'Regan?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Abbott?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative, two absent, the motion carries. Consideration in action to accept $850 in cash donations for the annual back-to-school celebration and approximately $20,300 in donations of backpacks, school supplies, and other items. Explanation, each year, the district's parent lays on seek donation to support the annual back-to-school event. This year, they secured financial donations from, from four groups for a total of $850. In addition, several organizations and businesses contributed nearly $20,000, and $20,300 in items for students, including backpacks and school hygiene supplies. Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Covas-Caraballo?
Yes.
Mr. O'Regan?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Abbott?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative, two absent, the motion carries. Consideration in action to accept 300 books with an estimated value of $1,200 from the Chelsea Kiwanis Club. Explanation, the Chelsea Kiwanis Club has generously donated 300 books with an estimated value of $1,200 as the organization hopes to create a culture of literacy in its community while working to give each child an opportunity to become a proficient and avid reader. Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Covas-Caraballo?
Yes.
Mr. O'Regan?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Abbott?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent, the motion carries. Consideration in action to authorize the district to enter into agreements of up to three and one-half years for plumbing, electrical, and/or elevator repair and maintenance services. Explanation, pursuant to state law, the school committee must authorize any contracts in excess of three years. The requested 3.5-year contract period will allow the district to enter into contracts that will cover the second half of FY 2023, plus three additional fiscal years. Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Covas-Caraballo?
Yes.
Mr. O'Regan?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Abbott?
Yes.
And Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Seven in the affirmative, two absent, and the motion carries. Consideration in action to amend the non-bargaining salary and wage schedules for 2022 to 2023 to create two new positions of vision material production specialists, salaried, and crossing guard slash lunch monitor two, hourly. Explanation, last spring, the school committee created a shared position of crossing guard and lunch monitor to increase weekly work hours to make the crossing guard position more attractive to applicants. This amendment will create a new position of crossing guard two slash lunch monitor to allow the opportunity to be available to more senior crossing guards. In addition, the new title of vision production specialist will be created and responsible for producing materials in Braille, large print, and other modes of communication for students with vision impairment. Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Covas-Caraballo?
Yes.
Mr. O'Regan?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Abbott?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative, two absent, the motion carries. Consideration in action to accept $155,000 from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for FY 23 Acceleration Academies Grant. Explanation, the grant supports implementation of the Acceleration Academies during the February and April vacations. Funds will be used for teacher stipends, professional development, and instructional supplies in support of the program. Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Covas-Caraballo?
Yes.
Mr. O'Regan?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Abbott?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative, two absent, the motion carries. Consideration in action to accept $120,000 from the Department of Education and Secondary Education for the FY 2023 Tag Assistant Grant, I'm sorry, Targeted Assistant Grant. Explanation, the grant funds will be used for stipends, contractual services, supplies, and materials, subscriptions, conferences, and other expenses to support the implementation of key strategies described in middle, middle and high school's sustainable improvement plans. Ms. Covas-Caraballo? I'm sorry, Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Covas-Caraballo?
Yes.
Mr. O'Regan?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Abbott?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative, two absent, the motion carries. Consideration in action to accept a gift of approximately 400 books with an S- with an estimated value of $500 from school committee chairwoman Kelly Garcia. Explanation, Chairwoman Garcia has generously donated approximately 400 books with an estimated value of $500 for use at the Early Learning Center in classroom libraries. Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Covas-Caraballo?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Abbott?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent, the motion carries. Consideration in action to approve the proposed stipend increase for Chelsea School Committee members to $13,000 and $14,000 for the school committee chairperson, beginning next term. Explanation, the Chelsea School Committee conducted research neighboring districts and determined that a stipend increase would commensurate their compensation with neighboring districts. Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Covas-Caraballo?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Abbott?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent, the motion carries. The Curriculum and Instruction Subcommittee has reviewed the proposals and has determined that, I'm sorry, I missed the motion. Mr. Jimenez Rivera moves to accept the homeschooling petitions for seven Chelsea families and nine students total. The Curriculum and Instruction Subcommittee has reviewed the proposals and has determined that the petitions have met requirements of the Chelsea Public Schools homeschooling policy. All homeschooling petitions must be approved by the Chelsea School Committee. Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Covas-Caraballo?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Abbott?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative, two absent, the motion carries. Consideration in action to accept the proposed awarding high school credit for middle school algebra policy. Explanation, the Chelsea Public Schools offers Algebra I to be taken in middle school to provide students who are already an opportunity to take more advanced courses in high school. This proposed policy will allow students who complete Algebra I in middle school the option of gaining high school credits as well as to have the grade count toward their high school GPA. Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Covas-Caraballo?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Abbott?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative, two absent, the motion carries. And lastly, Mr. Jimenez Rivera moves to accept the resolution in support of the Massachusetts Indigenous Legislative Agenda. Explanation, the Chelsea School Committee wishes to express their support for the Massachusetts Indigenous Legislative Agenda and encourages the state delegations to cosponsor, advocate, and vote in favor of bills. Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Covas-Caraballo?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Abbott?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
That's seven in the affirmative and two absent, the motion carries.
Thank you, Veronica. My bronchials thank you also. Do we have any communications? No announcements? Anybody have any announcements to make?
I have, I have two. I'd like to first recognize that Jeanette Velez was the Sokolosky Triangle personal best award awarded this last week, so congratulations. If you haven't heard her speech, make sure you listen to it. We put it online because it's very inspiring and you just see how much she loves Chelsea students. So I just wanted to-
I just want to say, because I was nervous, you know, I get out in the moment. So it was really, because you guys didn't hear the whole speech, is my story has purpose. That's, but it's amazing anyways, because that's what you guys heard. But I said, the story has purpose because whatever you go through in life is to inspire somebody else. So always remember that. So that's what it was to the end.
Awesome, thank you.
The non-bargaining agreement?
She read it. Yeah.
She did that one, and then you cut in.
Yep.
You want me to read it again?
Just to be on the safe side.
Just to be on the safe side.
Okay.
But I know I've read it, Monica.
Yes, I heard you. I was saying-
Oh, we, we did. I think, I just think we missed the, I skipped over the vote. All right, consideration in action to accept the updated non-bargaining benefit policy effective July 1, 2022. Roll call, Ms. Cabral?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Covas-Caraballo?
Yes.
Mr. Oregan?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Abbott?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Seven in the affirmative and two absent.
Veronica feels better now.
Can I, I'll continue with, I have another announcement, or two. We have our Chelsea High School band performing at the Chelsea Soldiers' Home tomorrow. And then on Friday, we have Kantari performing for the city's Veterans Celebration at the Senior Center from 11 to 1:00. So it's a really nice way to honor our veterans. And so if you can come out, please come out.
What time is the band performing tomorrow? At Soldiers' Home?
Yes, it's in the morning. I will check right now. Oh, thank you, 10 o'clock.
Thank you.
And then Friday, the celebration is from 11 to 1:00, is that right? At the Senior Center.
Okay, is that it? Okay, then we will call this meeting.
Well, before we call it, I just want to say Happy Veterans Day. Happy Thanksgiving, because we have a lot of holidays. But we did touch upon a lot of mental health. The students brought that up. And I do want to highlight that just tomorrow, my son, full disclosure, is in the Early Learning Center. And I know that the ELC liaison has been very busy. Well, we kept the parents also very engaged and busy, but the kids love it. And tomorrow, they're actually having a session for parents to, and I'll read it, because through Seesaw, in case, you know, obviously, we know this because we're here, but each school has their own portal where we get our text messages and our communications. And then the kids also get it, you know, through backpacks and stuff. But they also have an anxiety and depression workshop. And it's to understand anxiety and depression. So this is for the parents and caregivers. So this is just different ways, and this goes out in at least Spanish, English, Portuguese. And you could definitely hit translate, and it gives you that option as well. So this is just different ways in which our public school system tries to engage and communicate. So mental health is definitely very important to us, and it starts there. And next week is American Education Week. And they're going to be showcasing our staff and different, and there's a whole slew of different types of, again, activities for the children. And each school tends to do different activities throughout the week. So I just want to highlight that because sometimes throughout the, not, I'm not going to say the negative or anything along those lines because I like to hear what's going on in everybody's perspective just because our experience isn't necessarily the same. It doesn't take away from other people's experience. But it's very easy to forget all the good and all of the strides that are being done. And when we do forget that, it makes it very difficult to continue to do the good work because it feels like it's getting overshadowed. So I definitely wanted to just, you know, put that out there. That's all.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
To adjourn the meeting at 8:21.